We'll start. Good afternoon or good evening to the Shasberry School Board meeting. And we will jump right into the citizens' comments. Are there any citizen comments? Tim?
Yes, I wanted to draw the board's attention to a program called Starbase. Are you all familiar with Starbase? It's something the school does every year in fifth grade. It's a, I guess you'd call it an academy in Rutland that teaches STEM, science, technology, engineering, and mathematics. I've been hearing about it since I've been here and by all accounts, the kids love it. It's a great program. We're planning to do it again next year for the fifth graders coming in. Problem every year is if you have to take a bus up there. They do it once a week for I don't know how many-
I think it's six weeks.
How many?
I think it's six weeks.
Six weeks. All day, like each time they go up there.
Yeah, yeah, they're going all day.
But it's a, they need thirty-five hundred dollars to rent a bus to get kids back and forth for that. And the parents and the teachers are, have been meeting and organizing, thinking about ways that they can raise thirty-five hundred dollars to get these kids up there to do this. And I just feel like it would be a great thing for the school board to support this program and make that bus happen because it's one of those things where nobody gets to go unless we get thirty-five hundred dollars to get the bus. If they held six bake sales and hold, raised three, three thousand dollars, they don't get to go. And it's one of those things I feel like the school board could do for the, for the advanced kids. That there's not really an advanced talent, a gifted and talented program here. And I feel like sometimes those kids get overlooked and I think this is a, a great chance for the school board to step up and say, yes, we think this is a great program. We support this. We care about our gifted and talented kids too. And help the, help the parents out. I mean, they're still gonna be fundraising for all kinds of things through sixth grade, but this is one I feel like that the school board could, could do well to support.
And this is during the summer?
During school.
Oh, during school, okay.
Like on Wednesdays or something.
Okay.
Well, how are the funds being raised now?
Well, so far, we had a McDonald's night the other night.
But over the last couple of, I mean, they've been doing it for years?
I don't know.
The, a little history, it's, it was funded by the Rotary for a number of years. Last, I think it was last year, not this year, last year, that, that funding didn't happen, so they did some fundraising. They got a little bit of help from Starbase this year. It's basically, the program is free. It's just getting up there.
Right.
And the busing is what costs because we pay for buses up there, sit for the six hours of there and then come back.
And it's not just for gifted students. I mean, it's for all the students.
It's for everybody.
Okay, I was gonna say.
But it's the kind of thing I feel that the, the gifted kids are gonna be more eager to wanna engage in.
The rockets you see behind you are, are something they did there. They built those rockets and launched them and learned about rocket science.
And your, your point is well taken because I've heard this about this program and other programs too, that a lot of times when you get kids into new surroundings and into activity-based programs, it's not just to get good ones that excel.
No, not at all.
A lot of kids find that, that you wouldn't expect blossom in that kind of environment.
I think Todd.
I think it's definitely something we should look at, especially if they've been doing it all this time and now they need the funding and not getting it from where they got it before. I would hate for them not to be able to do it. Like you said, if they raise their two hundred dollars, they can't go because they're missing that extra three hundred dollars, so. I don't know if something we can, I don't know if we should do the whole thing or just supplement what they, how much they raise and help them get there or what.
Well, my next question is to Rick. If we wanted to do this, where would we find the money or do we have the money?
Well, actually, I'm surprised you didn't recall that you do have the money.
Well, yeah, but which account would this come out of?
Well, maybe it hasn't been reported here and I unfortunately don't have the exact dollar now, but as a result of the busing contract, your-
Oh, that's true. Yeah, we did see.
Your cost is gonna be significantly less than when it was, so you've got money in your transportation line item.
And how much money has been raised? Do you know?
I don't know, but McDonald's nights typically, I think, five or six hundred dollars maybe. But I would, I would really urge you to, to come forward with the full amount, just full amount, to say you really support the program. Like I say, there's plenty of other things that the fifth grade is hoping to do, like nature's classroom, which is gonna require some fundraising, at least the, the plan is to fundraise for that, to provide scholarships for the kids that can't pay for that.
Alright, so I need a motion then.
So the funding that's in, that we're getting back from the busing company, is that something that's gonna happen every year or is it just the, that's the one?
Well, you're not getting, you're not getting it back. You, you budgeted, I'm sorry, I don't have it in front of me. I wasn't planning on having this conversation, but you budgeted something for next year. I'm surprised you don't have these numbers on top of your head.
Well, this year, it's seventy-seven thousand, but we had eighty, eighty-seven, I think, eighty-eight thousand in the budget.
And it's only gonna cost you about sixty-five, seventy thousand. I mean, there's a sizable savings there for next year. So it's gonna create that fund balance in the transportation line item. We would move that from contracted transportation to field trip. I would believe this would be considered a field trip, transportation. So you've got the money next year. That reduced contract, Jen, is every year, but you're not gonna see the savings. You will just budget for it differently next year. Well, next year being FY sixteen. Then you budget for FY fifteen, but it would still show a net reduction in your budget.
So that would be my only concern, that each year, we may be in a financial situat- a different situation each year to say the thirty-five hundred is.
Maybe we can do it this year. It's, the concern would be next year if we start it.
When you say this year, you mean next year, which is FY fifteen? That's fine. I'm always in three different fiscal years, so I just wanna make sure we're all on the same page.
But, I mean, I think it's a good idea. I, you know, it's definitely something I, I'd like to do. Well, you know, we could have a motion where we, we do it this year. I don't know what we do next year. I mean, maybe we-
Or am I wrong? Do you need it this, I mean, or has it already been done this year?
It's already been done this year.
We need it for next school year.
Fiscal, yeah, fiscal fifteen. Okay.
You have that money.
Okay, then I'm looking for a motion.
Well, I, I, I motion.
Oh, okay. I need a second.
I'll say.
Tom's taking it.
What are you motioning?
She's motioning on the way out the door.
For the board to fund the Sky- what is it again?
Starbase.
Starbase, the transportation for that program. Yes, the thirty-five hundred, thirty-five hundred dollars.
Well, I, I-
It's not to exceed.
Yeah, I don't know.
Okay, not to exceed.
Well, I don't know if I'd say that either. I mean, I don't know what the-
Well, tell us what we need to say.
I wanna say thirty-two, but I'm not positive. I wanna say it's between thirty-two and thirty-five.
Thirty-five's a good one.
So not to exceed thirty-five hundred.
And to move the money out of the contracted transportation line into the field trip line.
For two thousand fifteen.
Two thousand fifteen.
For sco- for the fiscal year two thousand fifteen.
Can we discuss?
Yeah, well, yeah. Now that there's a motion and a second on the floor, now discussion.
So is there a way that we can organize, I don't know if it would be the responsibility to the fifth grade teacher to, or committee, or I don't know whose responsibility it is, but to reach out to community like the Rotary or somebody else who is willing to maybe take that on for another year? I mean, are there letters? How did the Rotary get involved all these years to donate that money? And is there a way that we can pursue another option in case we don't have it in our budget?
That, that was done this year. Tiffany Hall, who's the fifth grade teacher.
Okay.
She did reach out to a number of, and Starbase did offer some help with transportation. I can't remember how much it was, but they did offer some help, so it wasn't the full cost of this year. But Tiffany did, did try to find some funding in other places and it just didn't, just didn't pan out.
Yeah, as long as there's a backup, you know, in case we don't have it, that's my only concern. Because I would hate to see it go away myself, too.
Any more discussion? All in favor and a motion? Okay, unanimous. Okay, anybody else? Okay, hearing none. I, I, we were supposed to have the presentation for the district configuration analysis, but seeing as how we've got two less board members and they have a lot of information and some good questions they need answered. And is there anybody here from North Bennington? And I don't see any, so I kinda like to postpone that until I can get everybody here. So everybody has a, has a voice in this. And so Rick, I'm sure you won't mind if you don't have to do that tonight. I just, I just think that would be, you'd be doing it again and I'd rather do it at once.
That's fine.
Now, I know we have no-
You're not gonna meet in July, right?
No, but I'm wondering, should we wait or should we have a meeting on just this in July? Or actually, a lot of people are on vacation in July.
I'd rather not if you don't have to.
Okay, so we're gonna move it to August.
If you want me to, I'll be here.
No, 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 I, I-
I like taking the month off and when I say taking the month off, that means I get to go home at four, about a time.
There are gonna be people on, parents on vacation and stuff, so I don't wanna go into that. Okay, is that okay with the other members?
Yep.
Okay.
Do we need to keep a hold of this or will that-
Yes, I would, I would keep that.
Well, it'll, it'll always be on the web.
Right.
Yeah.
And it's not gonna get outdated or-
Did we, no, I'm not gonna change anything. Did we send you a hard copy?
Yes.
Yes. Richard said yes.
Okay.
A hard copy or an electronic copy?
Well, that is a hard copy. Did you print that off yourself or did we send?
No, you sent this.
So I would, I would prefer not to send any more hard copies because I don't wanna kill any more trees. That's okay. So I'd ask you to keep it.
Okay, thank you. I, I just think it would be better if everybody was here, okay? Next, we'll go to the action items, treasurer's report. Any questions on the treasurer's report? I need a motion in a second to approve the treasurer's report.
Make a motion to approve treasurer's report.
A second.
Okay, discussion. Okay, hearing none. All in favor of the treasurer's report?
Aye.
Aye.
Unanimous. Okay, KIP fund request.
I pass around, I apologize if you guys didn't get a copy of this before tonight. I wish you had a little more chance to look this over. But I shared with the board last month that in April, I went to a one-to-one computing conference with a couple of Shasberry teachers. It was a very interesting, informative day about schools in Vermont that are using one-to-one computing in their schools and some of the pitfalls, some of the benefits of those programs. I think I'd just like to read the introduction here to kinda get started and then Deb Daly's got a PowerPoint that we've, we've put together to kinda discuss this, this proposal we have. One-to-one computing addresses many challenges in education, which makes it appealing as a tool. We have a responsibility to build upon the technological fluency the students bring to us and prepare them for increasingly technological-driven world in the future. The personal computer has revolutionized every other aspect of society and one expects that the same should be true for education now that laptops are more affordable, durable, portable. We have an opportunity to transform the classrooms to help meet Common Core standards, which is integral in achieving twenty-first century skills we need students to have. The Shasberry Elementary Technology Committee would like to request forty-six thousand dollars, forty-six thousand four hundred dollars in the KIP fund to purchase necessary equipment to implement a one-to-one computing program for grades three through six. As you can see on the smartboard, is, we thought it was very important to have a vision, that this is really not about the device that we're asking to get. It's about the vision. Thank you, Sue. It's about what we're gonna use that device for and how kids, how it's gonna help kids both engage in learning and help them in achievement in the classroom. We think it's planning ahead for the standards. We know about the Common Core. We know about the S-Back. The S-Back is a computer-based program. The students are gonna need to take this on a computer. They're gonna need to know how to use a computer very fluently to be successful on this test. So we think it's kinda planning ahead for the future in that case. These are just some of the goals that we have. I'm not gonna read them all off. Go back one, Deb. Thank you. Improving learning in the classroom, giving students access to, to the computers. Right now, we have the one computer lab. Sixth grade and fifth grade are the only ones that have access outside the computer lab to, to devices. It'll prove student learning content. There's, with the new Go Math curriculum that the district bought, there's an online component that students will have more access to if they have a one-to-one computer inside the classroom. The reason we chose three to six was that's when the testing starts, is grade three. And so we thought the more hands-on technology use the students have, the better in those grades. Also help prepare students for the real world. I mean, technology's part of their lives. It's, they're coming to school, yearning to use it, and I think we should build on that. Go ahead, Deb. Other benefits, as you know, we have the one computer lab with Netbooks in it. We could use that lab for the younger grades more often, so free up some lab time. Resources will be available at any time, so if the class is in a teachable moment and they wanna research something, there's no waiting for the computer lab time once a week. They can grab their, their devices and get to work on it right away. Project-based learning, as you saw from the Southside Challenge that the fourth grade did this year, a huge project that they did throughout from January until, I think, last month. This would really enhance that project-based learning, having the one-to-one computers in the classroom. And the digital citizenship is something Frank Barnes, the technology director, is really advocating for in the future and teaching students the proper way to use technology and how you use it in the classroom and in the real world. I'm gonna let Deb and Sue Phelps talk a little bit about engaging the outside world with this technology and what they've been doing already in the li- in the library. Go ahead, Deb.
Yes, recently, we've started using some of the Web 2.0 tools that are out there. And what I really love about bringing technology into the classroom is just letting the students have a chance to communicate with the outside world and they get very excited when they know they can share their knowledge with other classrooms. We recently did a Skyping situation where we did a mystery Skype with another classroom around the country. They didn't know who they were talking to, but they- Mystery Skype, it's called.
Explain Skype to people.
Oh, Skyping, yes. Skyping is like a video conferencing, a tool where, you know, you call up another computer and they set it up in the classroom and so their kids are in this classroom. This is a, a classroom in Illinois and we were here and they had to guess where each other was located. So they had to use their geography skills and they used computers to, you know, and, you know, kinda do the research while they were investigating each other's questions or answering each other's questions. So that's a, that was a really exciting experience for us to do. And I, you, you just realize that with these students, if they had computers in the classroom to really do much more investigating, it would just, just help them grow immensely. So that was just one tool we used. We also used the Skyping tool to talk to a Yellowstone park ranger and that was really fun. The students were very engaged. They asked questions and it was just a wonderful experience for them. And again, we think keeping technology at their fingertips is a good, good thing. Let's see, I've got a couple of videos here of them interacting, which I won't go into. We also today Skyped with the Virginia Historical Society and they had a student or a teacher there showing them primary sources from the Civil War and it's, someone's got to really get some firsthand information. There's tons of Web 2.0 tools that go along with Chromebooks that are free. So that's what, another thing that's exciting is all the opportunities that these machines or computers would give the students. Collaborating, creating, and just learning to be critical thinker, thinkers with these technologies and available to them are really important skills that we're always trying to teach them in the computer lab.
Sue, do you wanna talk a little bit about what we did?
Just some of the advantages that I saw. One of the things was that Deb went to a conference and came back the next day extremely excited and implemented this immediately the next day. And we all, the only problem was that we had to make sure that the library was available so that we could have sched- we wouldn't have scheduling difficulties. And that was really exciting for the children. I also liked that we were able to Skype with the ranger and it was in real time, which was neat because there was nothing outdated about what we were watching. And the children were interacting with her, asking questions and absolutely engaged. And it was, it was a wonderful thing.
So the, the devices we're looking at are called Chromebooks, which is, I have one here. We have a few in the school now that I, that we purchased this year. And they're a Google-based, Google Chrome-based device. They run on Google Docs. If you're not familiar with Google Docs, it's basically all in the cloud. So students create documents just like you would Word and, and PowerPoint, all that, but it's, it's created in the cloud. So it's saved in a separate place. It's not saved on our server. The kids don't have to, you know, use any of our server space for saving their documents. It's all in the cloud. They can access it on any computer that has the internet. So they can work on a project here, go home, log on to Google and work on the project continued at home without having to save something on a, on a memory stick or anything in that matter. So it frees up a lot of server space. I've heard the conference we went to, there was classrooms actually going paperless, where they just basically left everything on the cloud. The teachers, the documents are shared with the teacher. So the teacher can open it up. They can look at it. They can see what the students are working on in real time. So the students working on it in the classroom, the teacher can log on to it. Deb and I were doing it earlier when we were going to the PowerPoint. We can see the, the changes being made as the students making the changes. You can comment on those changes, say, maybe you wanna think about this, maybe you wanna think about that, ask them questions. Students can have collaborative projects together, all working on that same document at the same time with different computers and putting all their thoughts together into, into one project. They're very handy. They're very fast to boot up. You open them up, you log on and you're going within a matter of seconds. Where traditional laptop, as you know, you open up, you turn it on, you let the little thing spin, you log on and you finally get going on it, then you gotta wait till the wire is connected. These are very, very fast. Their costs are about three hundred dollars per unit. That's with a maintenance fee to help take care of them. They're easy to set up. A student can grab any one of these and log on to their account and they're ready to go. They're not assigned to a specific student, so that makes them very handy also. So if one should break down, they can grab another one out of, out of the bin and then they could be on, roll with it. And then the collaboration part with the whole Google Docs is very important. I think it's, it's a very huge benefit for the students and the, and the teachers. And plus all the web tools that Deb showed you. It's more than just the, the computers. All these access to these tools that you can have in the classroom. One thing that I really like about it is it creates another avenue for the teachers to have some differentiated instruction. You can have some enhanced learning for students that are enriched, that need enrichment. You could also have some things on there for students that need an extra practice in a certain level of mathematics or writing or reading or whatever. So it really lends itself to, to that also. And the students love technology. Again, they, they, they eager to use it and they're eager to use it in any way they can at school. So I think we should, we should build upon that. Go ahead, Deb. What's the next one? So the final one, I think, yeah, is just leveling the field for our students. There's not enrolling Vermont, but all over the country where students are having access to computers on a daily basis. Our students don't have that and I think this will help level that field so they're more prepared. Middle school is going one-to-one with Chromebooks next year also. Every student in that school will have a Chromebook access every day. So it's gonna help them prepare that for that time also. I've also listed some Common Core standards that address technology in the proposal that I handed out to you. And then we're thinking of this as investment, not really an expense, because we really think it's investment in the kids and, and the school. And I've laid out what the cost for each of these is. The Chromebooks for a hundred and twenty, at three dollars apiece. Charging cards, which you need for storage and charging every evening. And I also added a smartboard with projector hardware in there because we do have one teacher in the school that does not have a smartboard in her classroom and that's our title teacher. And she's been asking for one for, for a couple of years and I, I thought that was important for her to have a smartboard as well as the Chromebooks. I think that's it. I'm gonna answer that.
Just a question on that amount real quick. Says projector on the left column, twenty-eight hundred. The right column is two thousand.
Yeah, thank you, Deb. Which is wrong.
Which one's right?
Twenty-eight hundred.
Twenty-eight hundred. So that's gonna increase the whole total amount, right?
Yes, it will. Thank you, Todd.
That's fifty-four hundred, fifty-four thousand.
No, I don't think it's fifty-four, is it?
No, wait a minute, that's right.
Eight hundred more.
Forty-seven, two hundred.
Yeah, there you go.
Sorry about that. Thanks, Todd.
Yeah.
So my only concern is, didn't we just buy a whole bunch of Netbooks for the sixth grade?
We got Kuno's last year, which were nice machines and we're gonna continue to use them. I think we found that they're more beneficial at the lower end. There are tablets similar to a iPad. They do come with a keyboard. Some of the students did struggle with the, the Google Docs part of it because you don't have the mouse with the Kuno's. Gabby Watson is a second grade teacher. She's been using a handful of Kuno's in her classroom and she's finding it's very beneficial for the younger kids that they're used to the, this part of it and using it that part. So we would actually roll those out to the younger grades, which is good because they don't have a lot of technology now. They have maybe one laptop in their classrooms now that they can access. So they don't have a lot in the classroom now, so I think that would, that would benefit them also to help roll those down to them. And then we could have Chromebooks from three to six. So they would not disappear. They would still be used.
When these things break down, who fixes them?
Steven is at, Steven is at, he's our computer lab supervisor and technology specialist. Steven?
We have warranty on it so we can get parts in.
Okay.
I work on laptops. I could swap a screen. Hinges and screens are normally what tend to go on these because of being moved around. They're very thin, so there's not a lot of cushion in there.
Yep.
Or when the kids are opening and closing them. Neither one of those components are very hard to replace. I'm not sure of. We haven't had these units before in the district, so we don't have exact numbers of what tends to break with them. So as far as projection on that, we, we don't know yet.
What's the long jeopardy on these things? Do they go in all?
Four years or?
That means if you-
Well, that's when that maintenance portion that Jeff was talking about, when you purchase these, in order to use them in our district,
Okay.
you have to buy this piece of software, which is, I forget what it is, but whatever the additional-
Maintenance fee.
Maintenance fee is, it's so that we can administer them.
Okay.
Otherwise, they act as like a individual machine, so this is, that's what actually expires. The devices work beyond that. We could then issue them in other classrooms, but we won't have the management function of Daniel being able to push applications to it, so say the S-Back browser. We won't be able to automatically push that onto the device. We will not have to hands-on work with every single device.
The only reason I ask the question is, is are we gonna be, let's say for the sake of argument, in six, seven years, gonna be buying more?
Well, probably, but, but these are three hundred dollars apiece. Where, what's, what would, what'll laptop cost?
About twelve hundred.
So either one, either one you're gonna buy in about seven years, you're gonna have to-
I understand. I'm just looking for that fund. It's a hundred and eight now, I think.
Yes, it is.
So that's gonna knock it down to around sixty-two, sixty-three. And I'm, I'm just trying to look ahead in the future. How do we get more monies
Sure.
to, to replace these from all, you know, all through the school, just so we have a, so we, we don't run out.
Yeah, yeah.
And it's just, well, I guess-
Also drastically come down in price. They were more expensive in the past and because there's a lot more vendors getting in, it was a Google thing to start with. They had one vendor, I think it was Samsung originally making them, and since they kinda took off, Netbooks really aren't being produced anymore. These are what are filling in the Netbook niche. And the price on these have really come down in the last couple of years.
And I did, I did, the hundred and twenty that we're asking for is above what we would need numbers-wise for students because natural growth of this new student comes into the district, obviously, we're gonna need one for that, that student. If one does break down, we can hand one to another student while the other one's being fixed. There's no downtime. So we will have a few extra on hand for, for that matter.
Okay. Well, I need a motion on this in a second.
I'll motion.
Don't want anybody fighting over it.
I'll motion it.
Okay, Jen and, and Todd's side. Now we can have discussion.
Yeah, it's just so, you know, technology is so frightening because it changes every time you sneeze, you know?
Right.
This is a lot of, I just wanna make sure this is the right one because we were convinced last year that those were the right ones.
Well, there's no one device that's gonna, that's gonna fit everybody in a school.
Right.
And, and I've talked to a lot of technology people and they're saying it's, it should be similar to a portfolio you have for your investments. You need to have a handful of different devices working within the school. This is not gonna answer, I wouldn't put this in a kindergarten class.
Right.
It wouldn't work. It's all internet-based. It's all about typing and everything. I wouldn't put it in a kindergarten class. Where a Kuno would be helpful and it would be useful in a kindergarten class. I like the fact that they're fairly inexpensive compared to all the other devices out there. They're all internet-based, so there's nothing we have to download onto it. There's nothing that's gonna, you know, the kids have to, lack of a better, I don't know what I'm thinking here, the internet-based part of it. It's-
We are doing very well managing. When we purchase these things, we have that maintenance software. We implement them. And based on that implementation, what I normally go around in the summer is installing, setting up, configuring the computers is pushed automatically based on what we have on our servers. So that process saves time that I would be doing. So that process saves time that I would be doing things. It alleviates the work required for that. We don't have to worry about storing the data, so we don't need more storage space. We don't have to worry about the bandwidth of communicating between our servers at Central, or at the high school, middle school and here. It's going straight out to Google. It's Google's process to back it up, so that's one less thing we gotta worry about. We don't have to worry about, really, anything short of making sure we have power and the internet's paid. You know, the, the, the rest of the maintenance required with these is very little.
And the testing...
As far as long investment versus a traditional computer, that I have to go around and pretty much have hands-on with every computer throughout the year. Do you have a problem with that? Restart it and it's basically coming up similar to new. So if it crashes and it freezes up, reboot it and it's like getting a new one out of the box. They have a very nice reset function. There's just a lot of positives to them because of how they work.
And we're currently losing the lab right now with map testing three times a year for a month. For three months a year, we're losing the lab because we have to rotate the classes through for testing for map. Sback's gonna make that worse.
Right.
These will be Sback compatible. The kids can take the, take the, the test on a computer they're familiar with within the classroom. They don't have to sign up to lab and make a schedule. Teacher's can do it when there's, when there's time to do it. Um, so there's a lot of benefits in that matter also. But I hear you, Jen, but there's no one device.
I know. I know.
There's no one device.
It's just discouraging sometimes, you know, you think...
Another advantage these have over the Kuno's, as far as how people look and implement them at the upper grades is on a computer, you can hover your mouse over something, get options. There's no hovering with a touchscreen. In order to get that dialogue, it doesn't know until you're touching it. That's something we had a lot of issues with with Google Docs is, say, creating a table. It's very hard to create the tables and things. That was one thing that very, that did cause some discouragement to some of the kids. And they would tend to want to not use the Kuno's during those points in time and just come in and have the lab, which if I'm map testing or there's another class, that caused a problem. We found that at the younger grades, they didn't really have that issue because they weren't doing that type of work. They were more dealing with the touch interface and working with it in a more simplistic manner that was more appropriate for their age level.
And you said the middle schools also get any of these?
Yeah, they are. So from our sixth graders though.
Seventh grade's gonna be a, uh,
Seamless.
Nice transition for them as well.
Yeah.
Yeah, they have.
They're just now going to a one-to-one.
Okay, okay. Also, is there gonna be any, is there any training required for teachers?
There, there will be some for some teachers, but it's, it's, um, I've, I've personally have taken a Google Apps course on how to, how to use all the Google Apps. And, um, I feel confident I could give some personal development in that area to teachers, but it's very, once you start using it, it's very similar to Word and PowerPoint and everything. Then once you, you can roll it pretty easily.
Okay.
Yeah. But yeah, there'll definitely be some professional teachers that need it.
And that's another advantage is purchasing these and having Google Docs in the cloud. That will reduce the number of office licenses that we have to purchase at a hundred or so dollars apiece. So if we bought computers, we wouldn't only have that twelve hundred dollar cost. We'd have the office license on top of that. So this is gonna save us that because, because we're EDU. We get that for free.
And then the, you cannot, the kids can also go home and log on to their computers and access Google Docs and do...
They can access their phones, vacation, which I doubt they'd wanna do, but they could. The library, their friend's house, their grandmother's house, if they don't have internet at their house. Uh, they don't have to worry about having our version of Office because there are compatibility issues between different versions. They don't have to have Office in case they have, uh, Corral or one of the other flavors that came on their computer. It kind of streamlines and as long as they have an internet connection, it streamlines a lot of it.
The parents can log into their...
Yep.
Now, there's nothing that these kids can get into that they're not supposed to be on to, correct?
It's restricted. That's part of that maintenance application.
Okay, that's, okay. I was thinking of the, the worst for some reason and I, I see so much of it lately, so...
The entire thing operates inside a browser, so just like you use Internet Explorer, Firefox, Google Chrome. When you open it, all you're given is a Google Chrome browser. That's all it is. So there's no viruses that can get on these.
Yeah.
Uh, you just browse the web, but you have to use web resources. So you can't go down to Walmart and buy Office and install it on these things. It won't work. You know, it's like trying to buy Office for Windows and try to install it on a Mac. It's just a completely different platform.
And these will stay in, in the school?
Yes.
And don't go out of the school?
Okay. Any other questions, comments?
Sounds exciting.
Are you excited?
I would say too that the, uh, at the middle school with our new math program, the, um, upper grades, seven and eight and, and maybe six eventually, uh, have, are looking at a completely online math program where they won't need textbooks and it will be, uh, it will be all online. So we're really looking more and more to the future of not having paper textbooks, but having online resources that provide the same material, but without all the books. So they can be continually upgraded and actually work at their own independent levels.
This'll be the textbook.
Yep, it is the textbook of the future. It is.
Isn't the middle school looking at new math books, own things?
Oh, they got the same program. We had, got the K to eight program, but they are, they're getting, you know, books, uh, student editions this year. But they're also having the online edition in hopes to transfer, um, to online only in the near future.
Well, the thing also, another thing that is so great is that, that each classroom can teach on different levels depending on the student's ability. So that takes care of the kids who need more help and the kids who are...
And those resources are available now with the new math program that we've chosen. So having their own equipment really will individualize that instructional possibility.
Well, do we have the money?
Yeah, you have it in, in the KIP fund, yeah.
Well, well, that was the motion, was to forty-seven thousand, two hundred dollars out of the KIP fund?
Yeah.
Yes, yeah. Cause I believe there's a hundred and eight and, well, wait a minute.
Our name changed.
Yeah, one eighty-eight, or one hundred and eight, two eighty-eight, sixty-one. Yeah, so you have the money in there.
Can I just ask what the KIP fund is or how that money, what it came from?
That money was from an estate. Uh, uh, Ms. Kip had passed away and left a, a bunch of money to the school.
Okay.
Uh, and that's, that's how we got that money.
Used as we see fit for the school?
Just for education only. Not for the building, not for black topping, anything like that.
Okay.
Has to be for education.
Education, yeah.
Anything else? All in favor of the motion?
Aye.
Aye. Unanimous, so. It's good.
Woo, that's exciting. That was easy.
I mean, you know, it, it's good. It, it's, it's good to do this, but I, I'm always looking for ways, how do we replenish that fund?
Is that...
So we can keep it going.
Yeah.
You know, for years, not just, oh geez, we don't have fifty thousand, so, you know.
But how long, I mean, sh- when, when was that money given to us? That was given like five years, six years, five years ago?
I don't know. Yeah, it's, it's a while ago, but it's just, you know, if we find certain ways to replenish those funds, it's, you know, just a...
Absolutely, but I think this is...
Just something to think about.
This is really a great thing to do.
Yes, it is. It absolutely is. Yep.
One more question. What are the other schools doing in this case? Are we above of, of what the other schools are doing for K through six or K through...
I don't, I can't speak for...
Uh, it, no, it's, it actually is different at every school.
Okay.
Depending on what, what their boards decide to do and what their budgets will hold.
So once again, Shasberry will be ahead of the middle school kids because we'll have this from three to six.
Yeah, that's a good deal, I think. Very good deal.
Yeah.
Okay, very good.
Thank you again.
All right. Next consent agenda. We have the minutes and the warrants. Anything on the minutes?
Oh, I had a little comment on minutes.
Richard, what'd you do?
I don't know.
That's a game. Who said that? Who has a comment? Did you say that?
I did.
You do, woo!
It was on page three.
Yeah.
Uh, line, I believe, uh, twenty-two, twenty-one, twenty-two, twenty-three. It said, "The math curriculum committee indicated that it would have recommended the Go Math program even if it did not align with the Common Core."
That was, that was, that was, somebody said that.
And I don't quite believe they would have thought to adopt something that wasn't aligned. So I don't know. Maybe you would've said they never would've.
No, I didn't bring the tape with me. Well...
I remember the context of that. Uh, Larry was, uh, questioning whether or not that was the right program and they said, yes, it was the right program. We're not doing it just to align with Common Core. We would pick this program, even if there was no Common Core.
Yeah, yeah. I mean, it was, I thought it was a sort of extraordinary statement.
Yeah, okay. Okay.
All right, very good. Okay, I'll do the warrants next, so we'll do, and we'll vote on it all together. You have warrant number ten twenty-three and the amount of forty-nine thousand, eight hundred and sixty-three dollars and eighty-four cents. Number ten twenty-four, it's forty-six thousand, seventy-three, fifty-seven. Two thousand twelve, thirty-one thousand, oh, sixty-two, sixty-nine. Anything on the warrants? Hey, I didn't have it at... Okay. All right, all in favor of the consent agenda. That's the minutes.
We don't have any motions.
Oh, I thought we did. Oh, I'm sorry.
Make a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Yeah, it's Todd and Jen.
My second.
Thanks, Richard.
Thank you.
Keep us straight. Okay, all in favor of the motion?
Aye.
Aye, unanimous, okay. Next, uh, policy. Number fifty-one fifty-six, student nutrition and wellness. It's for warning. So if you want any changes or you see something that's, you think should be changed, I can get back to the policy committee and tell them what they, they would be.
Well, why were so many things taken out? Do we, how, how do we get answers to that? Like on number three, the cafeteria guidelines, that whole section was taken out. There's a lot of things crossed off.
Yeah, I didn't go to the meeting, so, um, I think it's, it's Leary, isn't it, for the, uh, policy?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, because they, yeah. Um, let me, like I said, this is just for warning, so you tell me what your questions are and I will see Leon on that, so...
Oh, it's, uh, it's just my question, 'cause, um, there's so many things that are taken out when I was on the food service committee.
Mm-hmm.
These, some of these points were important to the committee and I don't know why they all of a sudden got taken off.
And discussion at other board meetings a- a- along the same line is they've got all the legal references.
Mm-hmm.
And so a lot of this was taken out because a lot of that is already included in the legal references and they wanted to simplify this rather than having to constantly update the test.
Okay.
Yes, I recall that too, that they said the information is elsewhere in these documents that are the references.
Oh, okay.
So you're okay with that then, Jen?
I think so.
Okay. Any, anything else other than number three? Todd, you got anything?
No, that's the only thing I had too, was number three. So, wonder why that whole thing was taken out, but...
Yeah, and same with the à la carte food and beverage guidelines. I mean,
Okay.
refers to foods and beverages sold by food service program. I mean, you know, there were so many issues that we were going back and forth about at, on the food service.
I, I know that, uh, CDC played a role in that, because they were able to sell
Right.
soda and chips at their store, which was not part of MAU and it's, oh, it was a mess.
Yeah.
But anyway, okay. Like, a- again, this is just for warning, so it'll be on the, the, um, meeting in August, so... And that'll give me time. I'll, I'll see Leon
Okay.
and Larry and, and make sure that this is, uh... Okay, all right. Okay, uh, did I get a motion?
No.
Okay, I need a motion.
I motioned to...
Okay, and Todd seconded it, so...
What am I motioning to?
Your warning.
For the warning.
For the warning.
Of, of the policy. Fifty-one fifty-six. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, unanimous. Okay, I'll leave that there, so I can check on that. Okay, we are now on facilities. Summer projects.
Um, above the, the normal cleaning for the summer, we will be replacing a, a large section of the kitchen floor where the tiles are just lifting up and, or disappearing completely. Um, so that'll be a big project that Cameron Floor Covering is doing for us, um, probably that first week we're out of school. We're gonna delve right into that. We're doing some more heating work on this end of the building, uh, this summer with Hayden Plumbing. Uh, hopefully, we can get the parking lot, um, started, depending on the funds after we do the water line.
Okay, so we're doing the water line first?
Yes, we, we decided to do the water line and get that taken care of and see what's left over from now.
We gotta do that, yeah.
Um, along lines of the water line is, uh, uh, Otter Creek came two weeks ago. They dug, um, well, they did an initial looking at for the plans. Jay's been in constant contact with them. They said we will have plans by early next week. Where then we can just put it out to bid at that point.
Okay.
Um, I believe I can just send that to Rick and he can put out the bid.
Yep.
From there, correct?
Yep, yes.
Um, we may need to meet at some point, um, at the end of this month, real quick, just to approve one of the bids, so we can get that project going as soon as
Yeah, we gotta do that.
Um, they did, uh, one positive was we had a, a dig right out behind the school here. That's copper pipe from the end of the building into the building, so that's a positive. We don't need to change that out. I guess that's gonna work out good.
That's good, yeah.
It does need to go to the state. The plant does need to go to the state because we're adding a, uh, fire hydrant. But they don't anticipate that being a, an issue at all. It's just something the state will check off on and then...
But we're gonna go from this hydrant out here and it's gonna go to that corner of the building?
Yep.
Perfect.
Yep.
That's...
So hopefully we'll have, I'll have this to Rick early next week and we'll have some bids in the next couple of weeks and by the end of the month, we can approve one of those. At that point, once we see that, I'd, I'd like to also, um, look at the bids that we already have for the parking lot.
Okay.
And see if, if we have the money, if we can get that also looked at, getting this done this summer.
And that's including the new section of the parking lot?
That's, that's what I'm talking about.
Over the playground, yes.
Yeah, moving that playground, making that a parking lot.
The fire hydrant, are we taking one out and adding? So we're just adding another one?
We're, we're running off this hydrant. Instead of going from the one over across the road,
Yeah.
we're gonna go from this one, so you won't have to go out that way or dig across the road or anything. It's, it's a lot, a lot simpler. Um, now that parking lot, we're not talking about black topping it. We're gonna just put the parking lot there for now and it's gonna be gravel or whatever, okay.
Yep, yep.
All right.
Yeah, I think we'll do the black topping all at once.
Right, yeah, that's what I was hoping that we could do that.
No, no, no.
But not easier.
Yeah.
Okay.
Um, so that's it for, uh, major summer project and, uh, the water line.
All right, good.
Another, uh, just question on summer. Do you, we had to add a classroom for next year? Since we're gonna have, year after next.
Yeah, the fifth grade right now is a one, one class.
Oh, is it one? So be the sixth next year, then be the one after that?
Yeah, so year after that we'll be adding a classroom.
Okay, okay.
Can I ask a question?
Yep.
Just on the timeline of the parking lot, this summer you're going to move that playground and, and, uh, gravel block, uh, where that far playground is?
Yes.
And then the black topping is gonna be over that and the, uh...
We've talked about in the past
The, the rest of it, which...
We've talked about, we, we're black topping the whole parking lot, so we're gonna hold off on doing that all at once, once that, and then we have the money and the funds.
That's everything, Tim, right to the walkway here, not up by the school, but at the beginning there, where they, with the bikes were and stuff like that, so...
But not this summer?
No.
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 Is the black topping maybe next year?
Hopefully. Unless somebody donates a big fund of money and we could do it this year, it's a possibility.
You never know.
We could, uh, maybe the town could color a road and we could get a paving grant for it.
You get right on that, Jen. I think that's a good idea.
Emergency parking.
Okay, very good. Okay, principals report.
Um, some, some recent happenings here at Shasberry. On May thirtieth, we had a big truck night sponsored by the PTO, fundraiser for the PTO. Um, very well attended considering it was, uh, threatening skies that night. Uh, it didn't really rain much on us, but we moved things inside. But it was, uh, it was well attended. Everybody had a great time. Um, on June thirty, or June third, we had a couple of events. One, uh, Deb Daly, who was just here, If you remember, she asked for some money from the Tiller Fund to bring Jan Reynolds here, she's an author and an adventurer, she's been all over the world. And she's written books about the places she's been and the cultures that she's seen, she did a whole school presentation, and then she came into the library and classes came and spoke with her about her. Adventures, uh, throughout the day, very interesting woman, it was, um, it was very fun. And that same evening on June third, Emily Umflett, who. We had a small grant come in, she bought some small canvases for every child in the school, and they had an art show. Um, the artist, they, they kind of, uh, were looking at was Wayne, I think it's Thibodeau, and he was a dessert artist. So all the kids made either a cupcake or a cake, some kind of, um, art around, uh, pastry.
Real ones?
What's that?
Real ones?
So there was two hundred and fifty paintings in, in the, in the gym. Emily did a great job, she decorated great, the, the kids did a wonderful job, they worked on it for, for several weeks. Um, it was, it was a lot of fun, it was, I think it's something that I told Emily, I said, we can make this a tradition, art show tradition. Um, because it was, it was well attended by parents, and the kids just loved showing off their artwork that evening. And June sixth, last Friday, we went on our sixth grade field trip to Howe Caverns. A little different than the past where we've been to, uh, New York City, went to Howe Caverns, which is much different than when I was a kid. Um, there's the cage, they're still there obviously, but now they have all kinds of outdoor activities, they have a ropes course, zip line. They had this huge water ball where you get inside with your friends, and they fill it with water to a certain extent, and then you roll down a hill. And you, the ball just kind of rolls underneath you, it was, um, it was something to see, I didn't get in it, it was way too cold.
Pretty soon they'll have a casino there, you really have to get that fun. Bring some money.
But it was, it was, it was a fantastic day, the kid, the kids had a great time, they were all exhausted at the end of the day. Um, and, uh, the caverns were a lot of fun, and they really enjoyed it, it was a lot of fun, for such a, this group, this is a very active group in sixth grade, I think they really enjoyed that. That aspect of the trip. Um, we're offering a summer camp this summer, uh, July fourteenth to eighteenth, it's gonna be, um, fun academic based. Math and science and reading, um, with also some arts and crafts, we're, we're putting out flyers now to families to get students signed up for that. Um, it's sponsored by the after-school program, Shasbury After School, uh, which segues into my last piece is, um, on June twenty-first. Um, the poster that's been, been going around, Megan, Megan had made up, there's a fundraiser for Shasbury After School, it's, um. Funkin' the Truck Band, a benefit dance party, it's at the Vermont Arts Exchange on June twenty-first, um, from eight o'clock until whenever. Till ten?
I'm not quite sure, the poster actually Matthew Perry did at VAE, and, um, the band. Are completely donating their time, and VAE is pretty much donating the space, so. It's been a really great community-supported effort for that, so.
Hopefully people will come to it.
That's a north thing.
Should be a lot of fun, and it's a benefit, the after-school program, so it's, um.
Perfect.
Looking forward to that. And finally, it's a school leadership team update, uh, we continue to make progress on our school plan. We are currently looking at data and how we're going to analyze data next year and, and use it efficiently and effectively in our classrooms with our teachers. And we're designing protocol around that data analysis as, as we speak, and we'll move forward again with that, some more summer work with that team this year. And that's all I have.
Okay. Thank you, John.
You're welcome.
Okay, superintendent's report.
Shall I begin, Fran?
Might as well.
Two, or would you like to start?
Let me, because it sort of goes with the wonderful things that Jeff.
Uh, because I just wanted to commend, uh, Jeff Johnson on doing such a great job transitioning to this position, and really. Um, he has just done a tremendous job in moving, uh, the school forward with the leadership team and. Using, uh, data and student assessment to move their instructional programs forward and, um, in, and all in a year. And I just think your leadership has been terrific, so I just wanted to congratulate you and say.
It's been a good year.
Great job.
Yes, absolutely.
So.
Well, I actually was going to say the same thing. It's been a great transition for you, very smooth, and, um, you've taken good care and supported the faculty very well, and it's been. Been a pleasure to watch you in that transition. I'm here, just briefly, this is the last Shasbury School District, School, uh, Board meeting. In my tenure, so I'm here to say thank you for the opportunity to serve the community of Shasbury and your school district. And it's certainly, it's been a pleasure, and I, um, have appreciated all of the interest and support and. Just thank you.
Thank you.
I wanna thank, I wanna thank Catherine, because she supported me long before I was in this position at the middle school with P U for life and, and the things that I was trying to do there, and so. That really got me started in this direction, I wanna thank her for that very much.
You're welcome.
Thank you for your help this year, Ben, you've been giving me a lot of advice and help this year, and now you're helping out down about you.
Such a pleasure, such a pleasure.
And I'd like to thank you too, I think you did a wonderful job as superintendent, and we're gonna miss you, I'm gonna miss you.
Thank you.
Well.
I could add, uh, even as a lonely parent, uh. Catherine has always been completely accessible to me, I've been able to, uh, send her emails directly, and she's responded to me, and, uh. I think, you know, for a superintendent to be that open and accessible to, uh, uh, everybody in the school community is really commendable.
Thank you.
Anything I can tell you is enjoy your retirement.
Now that there's been an appointment, I'm.
Taking a breath, can you finally?
Yes, I think I will be, not yet, soon.
Anything else, Catherine?
No, I will, um, leave, leave it at that, there were several of you that attended the legislative breakfast, I believe.
Yeah. Okay, uh, under my report, uh, yes, we did, we have appointed a new interim superintendent, that's Jim Culkeen. Uh, he had been running the CDC, uh, for three years, um, so we're excited to get him going on things. At the last legislative breakfast, um, I would have rather spent more time on certain things, but we had such a full, full, uh. Plate here. We talked about the bill H eight eighty-four, the miscellaneous tax changes, uh, home, base homestead rate and. Base education amounts to where, um, I think Rick, uh, our business manager, made a good point about any time. Somebody, the legislature does something, it adds money to our budgets, and he made a good, good argument. At that, and that, and they need to look at what they're doing, so it doesn't, uh, affect the schools all that much. Talked about H two seventy, the universal preschooling and looking toward the rulemaking. Um, talked about the retired teachers' health benefits, and the use of federal grants to cover employer retirement costs and administrative operating expenses. For federal grants. Um, special education pilot program for Swiss schools, that was, um, Karen Brunel. Uh, she did a good, uh, presentation on that, talked about the Green Mountain Care and Health Reform status. And we set the meeting, uh, are we, I think it's August, it's gonna be the next meeting, correct? They couldn't meet in July, I think.
Well, I think there was a debate about whether it should be August, October, or December, and I don't think we landed, so I think.
Okay, so that's to be determined.
Right.
And so that, there.
Um, Fran, just to, um, I think Wendy Pierce was describing the swift, um, use of special educators.
Yeah.
For Swiss schools will actually be, uh, uh, greater access to all students for instruction and still have the reimbursements. It's new legislation only for Swiss schools, and those schools in our supervisory union are Bennington Elementary and Molly Stark. But we're hoping it's a pilot for things to come in the state.
Okay, the last thing I had was the, uh, teachers have ratified the contract, teacher's contract. Uh, now, is that something we're supposed to approve at this board?
Yep, you'll do that, if you need an executive session to go over it, you may, but it's also now considered a public document, you may have your discussion now. And just make that motion.
Yeah, I, uh, do we need an executive session? I don't.
No, I mean, can you speak to this? Were you on the?
I was on a negotiating. I was on a negotiating committee, but I didn't, couldn't make the last meeting.
Okay.
So, I, I know there was, unless.
I just had, uh, copies of what, what was the tentative agreement?
Yes.
You passed those out.
It was attached to your email, but it was really hard to read. It's, um, a two-sided, I wondered if it would print, but it did, so it's a two-sided document.
So where does that leave us now that happens?
Well, it leads you at, first of all, it's a one-year contract.
One year, yeah.
Um, Fran, do you wanna have me do this?
Yes, please, yeah, because I didn't make the last meeting, I don't want to say something I shouldn't.
It's a one-year contract, the, um, teachers, uh, up to step nine, well, the highest step is step nineteen on the, um, salary grid. Um, so teachers will move one step, step in, um, salary, uh, placement. Uh, the people that are at step nineteen will receive a one-time small payment, um, because they have no step to move to. So there's a small payment there, uh, health insurance, uh, premium contributions remain the same. And I think there's a language, um, change in the contract to ensure that the agency fee that was paid. Um, is now part of the contract, it'll start July one. Um, so, um, I think that's, uh, al- also an agreement to begin negotiations by September first. Of next year for the next contract, with a, um, meeting on health insurance, and then, um, not a change. To this contract itself about starting negotiations by January fifteenth, that's still in there, but this one-year contract has a. Uh, before September first, it has been supported, as you said, ratified by the teachers' membership. And the Bennington School Board had a unanimous approval of it, so therefore it is now a public document.
Right, the, the thing that I'm, I'm sure still people don't understand about the health insurance, there's. Shasbury, Ponnell, and the CDC have an option, I don't know really if it is an option at this point.
Yeah, we'll have to follow it, because it changes as Rick says daily.
That's, uh, something we'll need Rick or somebody to explain to the.
Yeah, Joy and Rick.
Yeah, to the boards, because it, it's pretty complicated, and, uh, we wanna make sure we do the right thing.
There's a lot of, um, discussion right now in the state of Vermont about this, the status of the Vermont, um, system and what that all means for implementations. We'll have to follow it.
And why is it just a year? I'm sorry.
Well, I think both parties, the teachers and the, um, board negotiation team. Felt that a one-year contract would hold things in place while we sort the health.
Okay.
And understand the health, um, system that's coming into play.
Okay, that makes sense.
Yep. Okay.
So you'll need a motion?
Oh, I'm sorry, Tim.
Oh, yes.
When you say the, the healthcare contribution was constant, is that, uh, a constant fraction, or was?
It's a percentage of the premium that they pay, and it remains at. I think they're at eight, are they at eighteen?
They're at eighteen, eighteen percent.
Yep, of the premium cost.
Healthcare costs don't go up, but the, the shared fraction stays the same?
Okay, anybody else? Okay, our next meeting is gonna be in August.
Do we need a motion now?
Oh, I'm.
That's all right.
You're right, I need a motion, Ken. Thank you, Todd seconded. All in favor of the motion?
To approve?
To approve.
For the one year.
For the one-year contract, yeah. All in favor?
Aye.
Unanimous.
Thank you very much, I'm sure we're, we're pleased to have that.
Uh, our next meeting will be in August thirteenth, no July meeting, as of yet. Your budget status report is enclosed, and the enrollment for June is gonna be, to be posted on the SVSU. SVSU enrollment, rather. Any other?
I got a quick thing on this meeting, in August, uh.
Yep.
We talked about the water line.
Yep.
Bids and stuff, uh, do we have to approve that, if it's gonna begin at the end of this month? So we might have some special meeting for that or something?
It'll be quick.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Then you have an executive session for off-contract, um, compensation.
Okay.
And then you'll come out, and we do anticipate a action after. Well, we don't know what built it, we'll have to wait for their motion.
So I need a motion to go into executive session.
I motion to go into executive session.
And, and Richard, you got what it's for, correct?
Yeah, all contract.
And who's, who's gonna be informing us about that? Thank you.